I should've stayed up. CNN if you're able and uh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Thank you very much. Regular down board meeting of uh January twenty two thousand sixteen. First thing up is public comment period. No senior public uh Mr. Savoka.
Let me get jump in here.
Sure.
There being no public people. We attended the meeting, the budget, the governor's proposed budget meeting. And of interest was even though we did not get the big grants, there are money set aside to compensate nothing like what they got with the bigger ones got. Two of the things were water infrastructure and the airport, airports. It's a competitive thing and I think we as a board need to move on this without delay. I talked to Tom Sullivan with the BDC after the uh after the meeting and he agrees. I think that this, we've got to, we've got to contact CNS, Pat Edzinski. We've got a major project facing us and uh we've got, we've gotta move on this.
You're talking about water specifically?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also the airport. I think that's, I think it was forty million dollars was the figure floated.
Two hundred million.
Two hundred million.
Five hundred.
But I mean.
Yeah, forty million.
For the airport.
Split.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, that would go a long way towards a runway extension, but we can't wait.
He um, I will tell you this, I sent an email to Pat Edzinski at CNS, our engineer at the airport. He is supposed to be here.
Nine.
The ninth of the night, he's gonna see you the ninth of February to uh for us to sit down and come up with uh some conceptual idea of what we see as the airport's future uh in order to apply for this competition. One of the things that I suggested today is that there, that that sort of plan be broken up and have two buckets of money, one for smaller airports and one for larger airports. It's gonna be pretty tough for us to compete against Albany, Syracuse and Buffalo.
That's what you said and I agree with that.
But nonetheless, we should be competing.
We should compete.
No, I think, I think all that, what he, he corrected that.
He said that's just for the smaller airports. He thinks it's just for the smaller airports, not the larger airports.
Steve Hunt afterward uh told me that it doesn't include Albany, so I don't know.
It does?
It does. That's what I understood him to say, yeah.
Okay.
But we've met with Tony Collins. Tony Collins is on that airport commission. And he, the primary, the primary focus of that one are the downstream airports.
Yes.
To include, you know, the two hundred yard.
Right.
The bigger, the bigger airports, but I think we've broken the ice with Tony Collins and perhaps another meeting with him and his convenience as soon as possible would be in order. But I just, I just don't wanna wait.
I was also concerned with the, the big, the large award, which I didn't, I wasn't sure if, you know, we'd be uh able to receive an award, you know, that large. I asked, um, I wasn't at the meeting that was held here, but uh I asked some representatives what there is to meet some smaller awards that um, you know, might suit us better. And, but that's a good idea to split up, uh if they split up that money. The other thing is um, is our airport board, are they, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna ask them to start working on towards this or okay.
Yeah, and I expect that, that we'll include them in the meeting on the eighth.
They're, they're, they're gonna send the rep, right Joe, or Joe Frank?
There was an email that was sent out there and the individual we wanted to attend is, can't make it, so somebody's gonna have to pick.
Yeah.
Somebody else.
Yeah.
He's out, he's out, he's uh, he's gone to Florida, going back to New York.
Um, the other thing uh that I told you, it's up my mind, I came up today.
Was there a timeline? I love that.
Journal always gonna find.
Oh, that was the other thing. All of this stuff, don't forget it's contingent on if they include the budget.
Right.
So they still gotta have to negotiate the budget between the governor and legislature, so who knows if any of these ideas will survive? Hopefully they will.
But the state coverage plan is to have a business plan ready to go.
Oh, I agree and I think we should proceed like it's, yeah. And I surely, that's my intent, I think that's Pat Edzinski and CNS' intent as well. It's for us to be ready to go and if nothing more, I think we need to decide on a direction for the airport ourselves. And, and it may, may not be a direction we can pursue tomorrow minus funding, but nonetheless we would have a target of what we hope that will happen at the airport. There are some challenges there we need to meet, we need to, the zoning needs to be changed. The airport is still zoned residential agricultural. That needs to be fixed in my mind, it really shouldn't. The, not the airport itself, the property that we have around the airport. So that needs to be re-zoned.
There's six hundred acres.
Yeah, there's a lot of property there. It could be used for other things, commercial purposes, light industrial, et cetera, et cetera. So we have plenty of stuff we need to do to get the airport as ready as possible for anything, let alone this competition. So that's sort of what I asked Pat to kind of, one of the things I sent an email, I said, we need to think bigger, but big in all capital letters, is we go forward with this idea, if we're gonna compete, let's compete. Let's go up like, like with a big plan, with a big idea.
So the only large airport is Albany?
I, see, I don't know. They just said, and I don't know if they thought.
They set up, the article set up states, I mean, I would think Buffalo, Rochester, Syracuse, Albany.
Did I, did I mention Albany in my comment?
Maybe Westchester.
I did? So if I mentioned Albany in my comment, that's probably why they told me Albany was part of the company. So we need that, it was a, it was a thirty second, yeah Joe, Albany is involved as well, or it could participate as well. So we need to know more details and again, the details really won't be finalized till it's in the budget, so. But yeah, we need to be ready to go, I agree.
Yeah, we don't, we just don't, when we do find, if, if it does pass muster in this state legislature and it's, is ready to go, we've gotta be ready to go.
We don't, we can't flat foot it.
Can't be, you know, playing catch up with this.
I agree.
Or we're gonna miss out because it's competitive.
Sure, well that is very competitive, sure. Okay, uh we'll move on to the agenda. Resolution, a resolution to accept annual reports for the year twenty fifteen from the town clerk, the receiver of taxes and the justice office. Those are summary reports you get every year at year end from those three offices. Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion.
I have just a question.
Sure.
I wasn't aware that uh the town's school tax penalties collected is thirty nine and thirty fifty four. And then we get twenty eight oh five fifty, so we get a portion of the, of the penalties?
Yes, we do.
Um, that's the, when they, when they re-set, when they re-levee unpaid taxes or just?
No.
If they're late?
If they're late, we get to keep some. What happens is the school or the county, I don't think it's the town, the county writes us a check back. Either that or it comes right out of the check, we only, in the school, yeah, school taxes, I think it comes right out of Taya's checking account. I mean, she's done collecting for the school.
So is that like a portion of what, what, what it costs us to receive those taxes and deposit the funds?
I, I don't know where that calculation comes from. I think it's some kind of statute because we're a class one town and we collect school taxes. We're required to collect school taxes, um but other than that, we, we get nothing for it.
Collecting, that's all, that's all we get is twenty hundred dollars for collecting all school taxes and depositing the funds?
Right, which is two girls' salaries and paper and computers. We'll take this. Two kids in my opinion.
So basically, so basically the people of the town of Sina are funding the collection of taxes for the whole school district, which includes Lewisville, Norwood.
And probably Braja.
Braja, Norwood. Norwood or Norfolk.
Norfolk. Four towns.
Four towns, but the school district encompasses.
Should the whole district actually pay for their receiving of taxes and depositing the funds?
I'm not sure if penalties for people in Norwood or parts of Braja, that, those may go to their communities, I'm not sure how that works.
No, you're asking.
But in general, we, we provide services to collect all the school taxes.
Yes, we do.
It's our labor, our paper, our ink, our shooters. We collect the whole district, which includes Messina, Lewisville, Braja, Norwood. But the people of town of Sina incur that cost of collecting those taxes.
It's outside.
It's not the whole school district, but just the people of town of Sina, which isn't, isn't really fair.
Um, and it's, and I don't know how it came about Sam, but that is, I think that is indeed the case, that we collect the taxes for the school district. I don't know, was there, do you remember, was there ever a discussion about, I don't know, happened?
Years ago, they used to pay for half of the computer or um if we needed any equipment, sometimes they would buy the equipment.
Maybe we should revisit, revisit that again.
And they have to appoint Taya as their tax receiver of taxes, I believe.
She gets uh, our receiv-, whoever our receiver of taxes.
Right, right. But we employ them as the town receiver of taxes, the school has to, they just make that person as their receiver of taxes. So um, that's an interesting question, Sam, and I don't think it's one that we should just dig up or why not ask the question to see if.
Association of Towns Attorney.
Yeah, I, I guess that on my list.
Good.
Alright.
Let's find out.
But you can just email her, um she's very knowledgeable about all that stuff.
Getting her name.
Yeah, either just to save your.
Lori, Lori Mithin.
Lori Mithin.
No, it's Mary, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Something else now.
I have, I have to email.
Okay, any further discussion, we settle the motion on the floor. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, session, motion carries. Resolution to accept or reject bids for two thousand a year sterling dump truck. Uh, we had, how many bids did we get?
We were actually at two, one for twenty five hundred and one for forty seven ninety. I don't, I don't think that's acceptable. I think what we'll do is hold off now, sprint comes around, we advertise.
So you say we, we think we should reject?
You know, the construction and work and business picks up, but I, I don't think that's enough.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to reject all bids.
So, second.
Motion and second. Uh, any further discussion needed? All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, extension, motion carries. Resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign an RV RDA grant application to Lake St. Lawrence Winter Chill in the amount of twenty eight thousand one hundred ninety seven dollars. The uh, RV RDA was approached about funding uh a portion of the budget for the winter show. They have accepted. We have to actually formally apply. They actually, they said they granted, they did a grant in this amount. And uh, we need to do a formal application, which I, which I completed. They just need your authorization to move forward. It passed through, the money comes to us, we pay it back out to cover winter show expansion. Motion and second.
Second.
Second, good, discussion. Everybody clear what we're voting on here? We had to actually apply to the RV RDA to get the money that they granted us, which is normal procedure, the way it works. And that's the amount of money. The total budget for uh winter show is just under seventy thousand dollars. Much of that is the hockey game, which of course will actually generate revenue, the paper itself. And some of the other, obviously the other things are generated. You have the fifteen thousand dollars for the three communities plus this, and then other revenue will come from events uh that the RV RDA is generating. Okay, all those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, extension, motion carries. Yeah, I just wanna point out that there, any discussion, if there is any, the New York State Public Service Commission is sponsoring two information sessions, a public statement hearing regarding proceeding currently before the commission. That is actually the increase of rates for MEB. It's gonna be held here next week, I think. Any report, any, you guys have any report on it too?
People.
Yeah, I think it's uh next weekend, twenty.
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth, yeah. So um, and it's right in this room, I believe. So if anyone wants to attend and to observe their way in, you're welcome. Any else on that? Okay. Next up, uh, the New York State Department of Transportation has completed the investigation regarding North, North Racket River Road. That's actually the request that we had submitted to reduce the speed limit.
Yes.
And they rejected that.
Yeah. It was about the fifth time.
Yes.
What reasoning?
The reasoning is, is the road, there is no roadway characteristics or hazards, I guess, in the road. Uh, there's no roadside development, uh, there's no accidents or reports, it's statistical analysis that, that say prevailing speed limit, speeds are determined, or speeds are a hazard. And they did a laser survey and basically we don't meet, it doesn't meet any of the criteria to reduce speed.
The sad thing is, had there been five accidents and three people killed, then we would qualify. Now, it's, it's unfortunate, but that's, those are the criteria they use, some of the criteria they use.
It's the same Frank, is the alcohol bill, at forty miles an hour, which no one observes.
How you report it?
Three or four times also.
Yeah. So I forget who requested that, what recent time, we had a letter about that, don't we?
I think that was the gentleman that runs the bus garage.
Right.
He just bought a home, just bought a home just up from the Bailey.
Yeah, that's right.
North Racket intersection.
Alan Rogge.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um.
Do we notify him that or will this be in the paper or what?
It'll be in our paper.
Yeah, hopefully they, if we use it over there, I don't know. This is Austin Rogge.
Rogge, Alan Rogge.
Alright, updating New York State Water Grant Application Program. This is, uh, we talked before about the need to replace the line in North Racket. Our first application was not successful. There is round two, however. Uh, we have just um finished paperwork to reapply uh for round two. The rejection said, as a matter of fact, encouraged us to, to fix the deficiency in the first study or, or application and applied round two. So I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll be successful to fix the problem, which is a matter of uh declaration of uh environmental, uh, what am I looking for?
Wasn't it secret, it was a long.
Right, the secret, right, needed a long secret form, um, and which is an environmental quality review form. We missed that in the application, so we will submit it in the second round and hopefully get funded. So to be continued. Obviously it says, it says, it sets our timeline back for a while, a little while. Okay, um, we discussed the Association of Towns meeting. And there will be, we will have uh at least one, if not two people attending that annual meeting of Association of Towns in New York City in uh February. Because there will be business conducted at that meeting, we need to identify a voting delegate and alternate delegate for those resolutions for the business meeting on the last day.
Make a motion, Sam Carbone, be the voting delegate and Steve O'Shaughnessy be the alternate.
Okay.
Sir.
Motion and second, uh discussion. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, extension, motion carries. There is money in the budget for that, by the way, so. Okay, uh, we have uh. What was the other thing we needed to act, was there something else?
I gave you the thing about the wings of freedom.
Right, what they do that, oh, here it is, there's something I attached. Um, we are, one of the things we're gonna try and do, what we will wanna do is to, you remember uh, I don't know when it was, six, eight, ten years ago, there was displayed at the airport or some World War II aircraft from the Collings Foundation?
Yes.
Been talking with Pat Edzinski, trying to get some other events at the airport, trying to get some traffic and raise the profile there. Uh, we're going, we want to send a letter of inquiry to the Collings Foundation again about bringing back the Wings of Freedom tour, which now includes, I think, a fighter plane, I think some, some later planes, either in Korea or era, or even Vietnam era. Don't know which, we never, if, if you apply and they say, yeah, we'll come to your airport, you never really know what planes are coming until it's scheduled. So what I'm looking for is approval for me to send a letter to the Collings Foundation asking them to consider seeing International Airport as part of the tour, Wings of Freedom tour this year in twenty sixteen. Okay, the letter's already, the draft letter's already prepared, so. Can we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I don't think there's any.
Who's gonna say?
Go ahead. I don't think there's any money involved in that.
That's what I'm saying, they charge us.
I don't think so.
He used to charge to get in.
They charge, yeah, they charge, but they don't charge the host, you know. You wanna ride or, or uh.
I didn't charge that time, I remember.
Not the tour, no.
I remember your father-in-law, that was, he got in the plane, it was just like the plane he was in, you know, that is just like the plane that he was in, but he tied up the people and he didn't go in.
I actually took a ride.
His picture, I remember that.
We um.
B seventeen.
B seventeen.
Yeah, it was, it was uh, yeah, it was a seventeen, it was here, yeah. They were supposed to bring two, but they don't, but the B twenty nine didn't make it. But I collected all military stuff since I was a kid really, and so I said, oh, but it'd be kinda cool riding that plane, but I wanna spend the money. My wife said, are you nuts? I said, what do you mean? She said, when are you gonna get another opportunity? I said, I don't know. She said, spend the money, you go. So I did and I flew in it, it was pretty amazing, just a short flight, but um, I kinda said, I'm s- I don't afraid of heights first of all, but I don't like to fly. So I'm in this little jump seat behind the pilot and it, and it's noisy and it smells like gas, you know, everything. And um, I said, imagine doing this at forty thousand feet when it's thirty below zero and the German flag is shooting at you. You know, which is what these guys did, pretty amazing stuff. I'm up there on a nice sunny day at twelve hundred feet, wherever we're at, enjoying the, the plane, looking at, enjoying the ride, looking at the scenery. So it was, it was a pretty amazing experience, but so hopefully we'll be successful.
You need a motion?
We already have a motion and a second, I believe, don't we?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Um, all those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, extension, motion carries. Let me read a copy of this later afterward. Also neglected at the last meeting to ask for a motion, I'd like to send a letter appreciating to Sheila Benn, who was the senior citizens director for twenty one years, I believe. She did a great job. I think she kind of, when she took over that job, it wasn't very formulated, very organized. I think over the years she did a great job there, uh, and I think we owe her a thank certainly. I'd like to send a letter with your support uh to thank her for her service all those years as the uh senior citizens executive director. Any motion to that extent?
So.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion?
Joker would do one for Joe Cordell as well?
Yes, we should.
He just retired.
Yes, right.
Twenty years.
Well, I have a department. Okay. That's right, I haven't given a priori yet.
The town.
The town.
Yeah, I've got all this. There was somebody, I'll give you a print, I'll give you a print. Man, I love it, right? Okay, uh, all those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, extension, motion carries. Okay, uh, transfers, did we do the, we didn't do the transfers amendments yet? Any motion for those?
So. Second.
Motion and second, discussion. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, extension, motion carries. Order number one, you're replacing bills.
So.
Motion is there a second? Motion and second, discussion. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, extension, motion carries. They also have financial reports, as you always have, for review. If we need to have that committee report somewhere, I would.
I think.
So let me see, I didn't remember. Highway and airports are first of all.
Okay, uh, the airport, um, obviously winter's here, it's been going off long in snow. Um, we also have uh this Mr. Stubbe, who is Air Methods, uh, they are life in that flight. They are right now stationed in Potsdam. Um, they're looking to come to Messina for three months this year because Potsdam is doing the runway expansion. They don't wanna be involved in that, working around that. So we have a meeting with them on February tenth. Uh, they wanna rent a hangar, they wanna obviously buy fuel from us and we gotta look at some kind of, they, they gotta man twenty-four hours a day, so some kind of crew quarters type thing. So obviously, we guess, I got some things in mind, um, so there's a meeting, Joel and myself and Sean and Mr. Stubbe will meet and take them to the airport, show them around. He's kinda their uh, their guy in charge of uh facilities, so he's gonna be up here. And we need to be thinking, you know, how, what we wanna charge it for, for leasing, the hangar, you know, potentially uh any kind of crew quarters, how we go about getting them and, or what can we do?
I'll go.
So, yes, you're, you're not emailing, so, nice enough. But, so that's some revenue, maybe fifth, they're looking for May, June and July to be here in Messina. Maybe they'll get here and like it and last day. And then the highway garage, obviously, like I said, winter finally came around. So far in the, in, I'll just go back to December, December we worked a hundred and three hours of overtime. Compared to last year, it was a hundred and ninety-four, so we basically were kind of a plus for December, about ninety hours.
Oh, was that?
Yep, uh, we worked one Saturday, one Sunday. Uh, January, a little different, uh, we've been out fourteen days out of the thirty-one. Uh, we've worked two Saturdays, two, one Sunday and one holiday, and we worked three hundred and ten hours compared to four hundred and sixty-six. So I think we've still come out ahead of the game for, when it comes to overtime for January. It's supposed to be a pretty quiet week, rest of the week's pretty rough, so. As far as salt usage.
You've been out fourteen days of twenty.
Yeah, well, it's been, if you look at the extended forecast, we're pretty quiet right through next two.
I was just saying, instead of thirty-one, we're working twenty, so yeah, hopefully we'll.
Just from a salt usage standpoint, we're roughly, uh, we've used six hundred ton less so far this, this year compared to last year, so. Uh, we had at the library, um, on January fifteenth, we had a meeting with Elaine, myself and Train. Um, we are basically, uh, obviously she's gotten some money for the upgrades of the controls for the air conditioning heating system. So we, we've gone ahead, Matt, um, by the end of January, they're gonna come back to us with a scope of work and a, uh, like a final cost to go ahead with this project. And once we go ahead and approve that and say it's okay, they'll, during the month of February, they'll bring in their general contractors, they'll look over the job and hopefully by the end of February, we'll have a project ready to go. They call it the off-season, which is between heating and cooling season, which is typically April to July. Well, obviously in July, it can get pretty warm, but um, they said the project could take up to three to four months to complete. So we have the ability, I asked him, do we have the ability to run the air conditioning manually? Yes, we do. And we have, if we need heat, we can run it in manual. So we, we, we would have to adjust manually controls, adjust the controls, but we would have heating and air conditioning is needed. So um, they are in state contract, it's all state bid, um, they'll write us with a number. And the, the library board, uh, basically they'll approve that if they, if they wanna go ahead. Plus she's still looking for additional funding and Train says they think there's some funding out there they can look at too for. So hopefully we'll have a project all put together by the end of February, get that home, so.
The new hire at the highway garage?
He's working out very well, yes, very good. He's a, he started plowing by himself this week. He um, coming along really good, really happy to have a job at the Colling Messina, really is.
I'd hear that. Okay, uh.
Joe, on that airport thing, is it us that are gonna meet and make the big plan of what we wanna do or who did you want to meet on this? So we don't lose that one? This board?
It would be a combination.
I think, I thought was that we would start with Pat Edzinski, the airport committee, and then a couple people from the airport advisory, the airport committee, the board, which is Albert Nine, and then uh, the airport advisory committee, and then get an idea of what is available, what an application has to look like, and come back to you guys for specifics.
Okay.
Um, I think we can do some of that by email. Um, I think we can use some of that by email. And if we need to take a formal action, we'll have to take it here for you.
Got it.
If they do want a special meeting, but, no, and, and if anybody has an idea, please.
Yeah, if anybody's got anything they wanna look at, you know, throw, send an email to Joel or me, or whatever, we'll bring it to you.
And, and like I said, I think we need to get really creative and, and see where we're at.
Joe, do you think with the school talking about combining, maybe, uh, Jefferson School, like, that they decided they didn't want Jefferson School anymore, that would help a lot with that? Because isn't the school's location a big issue with extension, you know, might as well as that?
It's the only issue, certainly, yeah. I think it's an issue anyway. I hadn't really thought about that. Good thing, you know, if, if something happens, it may do close Jefferson.
I don't know what schools they, they haven't even mentioned, have they, what?
Yeah, I thought I read something the other day about.
I'm pretty sure.
They have three options.
You have a plan.
There's three options.
So, if that was the case, that would eliminate, that one concerning, kids being right there.
Good point. Should we check that? Okay, uh, I don't remember the order, uh, B D C, anything new there?
No, we're meeting tomorrow. Our last meeting was, um, prior to our meeting two weeks ago, so I was cut short on that, but, uh, we didn't really get much out of that. Um.
M E D meets tomorrow.
Okay. As is the Chamber of Commerce is holding their annual luncheon meeting tomorrow. Uh, they are, uh, also have, part is part of Wintershill, are sponsoring several different children's events, uh, kids carnival. They're also hosting a, uh, photo contest, my, I haven't been in a party. My favorite Messina photo, or something like that. So they're pretty busy, as always. That's the update from the Chamber. Um, hospital, uh, I, I didn't make the meeting Monday. Uh, can anybody else go? Okay. You read the stuff in the paper, they finished the year with a surplus, uh, for the first time in several years. Which is a good thing. Of course, so that would be possible by the grant from the state to cover the retirement, as well as the budget they laid off, but. Twenty people, something like that, cut twenty thousand, like, uh, last year.
Right. Well, around the subject of the hospital, I almost think it's wise for the board to consider asking Assemblywoman Russell to look at the public, into the public benefit corporation legislation. And we ridiculed ourselves for not being proactive, and looking at different avenues, or make sure we cover our bases. You know, I think the town should put a faith effort into, uh, cooperating with Assemblywoman Russell, and, uh, start the process of looking into that for an alternate, called alternate plan. There's obviously a possibility of a petition for public referendum that might affect the outcome of the hospital, as well as, um, as well as the, you know, one another vote with the transfer. And if, if that doesn't turn out to be something we can accept, we have to have something else to fall back on.
I mean, wouldn't that, it wouldn't hurt to go off in several, more than one direction, but if you.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. I mean, I think you should leave your options open.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, they talk about affiliation, I mean, we could affiliate, you know, and they, I think the CEO had talked about affiliating some of the other public benefit corporation hospitals, the other two were affiliated with State University Medical Schools. I mean, why couldn't we give that to Uptown?
That's a possibility too.
The, um.
I would rather, I would rather go with a New York State hospital, which are gonna affiliate, rather than something like Burlington, which seems to be the winning control out there, I think.
One question I have with Burlington being another state, how does state funding work for our hospital, if they're affiliated with Burlington, or Burlington owns them, or how does that all work? There's a lot more to this than just.
They, they already have three hospitals in the near state that are affiliated with, Elizabeth Town, C V P H, and, do you remember the third, I can't remember, there's, there's a third one. So apparently it works on some level. Uh, you know, I, I'm not gonna say I'm opposed to public benefit corp, but I wanna say, however, that when I looked at Star Lake, it failed there. They went that route, ended up going, not for five, one, C three, not for profit, route afterward. So that's, I guess, I'm not ready to, to look at public benefit corp at this point, personally. The, the, and I think because it will cost money to study that, and we're not gonna.
I'm just saying, we start the process. I mean, maybe it gets completed, maybe it doesn't, maybe something else happens. But instead of just sitting there and maybe six or eight months down the road, the transfer agreement doesn't work out, then what we do, we start the public benefit corporation legislation, then when legislature's out of session?
Well, so you wanna start the legislation?
Yes.
I'm, I think the first step would be to study whether it makes sense or not, before we pursue legislation. Shouldn't we have something in our back pocket saying, this is what the pros and cons of public benefit corporation?
I guess the question is, what can't the hospital do as a public benefit corp, corporation, that they can do as a pu- a private? What, what makes this not work for them?
What they can't do is they won't be able to pay their pension, much like you can now, in my opinion, but that's why I'm opposed to the public benefit corp.
If you, I specifically asked Bob this question, it was in a slideshow, a presentation that I asked for it three times. And that's another thing I wanna get to, too. His presentation shows that the hospital will be in the black with paying the, the pension system. It was just paid by the state this year, thanks to Assemblywoman Addie Russell.
Yes.
It's gonna be paid next year, thanks to Assemblywoman Addie Russell.
It will?
Yes, it will.
Now, that's news to me, I've not heard that, you ever hear that?
It was this year, and there's one more payment coming.
So three years in a row, they make the payment?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding, there's one more, one more payment coming.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see that blog in white, I've not seen any evidence of that anymore.
But nevertheless, nevertheless, the slideshow presentation from Bob Oldman showed the hospital being in the black in the future. And I specifically asked that in our presentation, but they, we had her here.
But not to the two or three million dollars, Sam?
Yes, yes, I asked him, if that included, John's got the video on, on, uh, on YouTube.
Yep.
And you go through and look at it, I asked him that specific question, if that included the pension, he said yes. Okay, well, we don't need to argue about it. Actually, I would like that presentation, I asked for it three times. Actually, um, last time was an email, I've been avoided on that. I would actually like every presentation, the very first one he had, and then the evolution of the second one, and the third one. I guess I want the trilogy of the presentations.
And you requested those by email, and you not got them?
I requested them personally, as well as email.
Okay. I'll follow up on that for you as well. There's no reason why you can't have them, that I could see. So, I, I.
I'm saying it doesn't hurt to start the process.
What process, Sam, and how do we start it?
The legislation. I asked Assemblywoman Russell to proceed with legislation. It was asked for before fifteen years ago, Chuck Raytide, is that right there, he said, fifteen years ago, we tried to get it. Why did they try to get it back then? What makes that any different?
No, 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 they didn't try to get public benefit.
Yes, they did, yes, they did. Apparently, the town board agreed to it, 'cause they went and tried to get it, uh, Chuck Raytide did.
I think he was talking about the flexibility bill.
No, he's talking about public, public benefit corporation.
I, what I understood him to say was, public benefit corp wasn't pursued because anything would work. That's what I recall, but maybe I'm wrong.
Let me change, let me change my route then. I think we need to ask Assemblywoman Russell to look into legislation for the hospital, to be able to affiliate and do what they need to do. I think we need, uh, full, uh, cooperation from the hospital board, the administration, and their contractors, as well as, uh, a good faith effort from the town.
Okay, let me, let me go another route as well. We've given the hospital a board direction last month.
No, I'm saying that they should cooperate with this legislation. Okay, she needs to know what they need to have as well. I mean, there are, uh, there is some legislation presently, but it needs to be ta- but it has to be tailored to our hospital. I'm just trying to cover the basis for the future.
I understand that. And again, I want, I'd like to see, whether it's from the hospital or from somebody else, what public benefit corp would do for us, and, um, are there expenses associated with it, and, um, how we need to pension benefits? I don't remember his presentation saying they could.
I would like to see what you can do as a public benefit corporation, and you can do with a private, other than the retirement system. Why you need to be private, rather than, uh, another, I don't know. What makes that different? As far as affiliation, making deals, whatever you wanna call it, uh, getting doctors in, uh, shelling out, money for a doctor to come up here, or whatever programs that they have, what makes that different?
So are you looking?
I know it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, they put this in a formal motion?
Yeah, I'll put in a formal motion, that's, uh, that the town of Messina, the board of the town of Messina, ask Assemblywoman Russ- Russell to start legislation that would allow the hospital to, um.
To literally necessary to affiliate?
Yeah, affiliate, or what they need to do to survive in the future. That there's a good a, good faith effort from the town, and full cooperation from the hospital administration, the hospital board, and its contractors.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll think of that.
Okay, we've had a whole bunch of discussion. Do you need any more?
Yeah, uh, I think you, yeah, you brought up a good point. Where is the pros and cons of this, but, I mean, we're bringing up something that we don't know if it's going to fit what our model's gonna be. I mean, I believe, and I, I believe the CEO said that something about public benefit corporation with the smaller hospitals wouldn't work, it was, it might've worked in the bigger ones. Didn't he say something like that at the presentation?
I'll tell you what he did say. The meeting that you and I went to with Assemblywoman Russell, he said that he would agree to legislation that would allow the hospital to affiliate, if you remember correctly. Right? We left that meeting, and Assemblywoman Russell was gonna work on legislation to, to allow the hospital to affiliate. Then, the next presentation that Mr. Oldman gave, he said that would take too long.
And didn't he say something about the size and population?
If you, if you, if you remember in the slideshow, he said, he added to his slideshow, that would, that would take too long to accomplish that.
I mean, I remember that he was saying that the hospital had to affiliate, or be tied. The only two hospitals that were public benefit corporations were affiliated with SUNY Medical School. One was, the only one was in Westchester.
Yeah, they were large hospitals.
And so.
Those are public benefit corporations, yes, and I have legislation, uh, probably to that.
Yeah.
This would be tailored to Messina Memorial Hospital.
Right. But in the same, along the same line, I was imagining that we would affiliate with, you know, we could explore affiliating with, like, Uptown, which is a SUNY medical.
Shouldn't we step one, and, and go to him again and get a clarification? It doesn't sound like we have enough clarification here. Step one should be clarification of whether this would fit, whether in his experience versus what they've already studied. I don't know, has the board studied that already?
Has what board studied?
Hospital board of managers.
I don't know, they looked at it in the past, I don't, if they originally presented it in the past.
And do they, Joe, I, I've never been on a hospital that.
I don't, there wasn't a study to privatize it, it's all we had is a slideshow that changed three times. We have nothing. What do you have that shows a study that could go private?
I'm gonna keep coming back to what I had, but I said many, many times. There was one town-owned hospital in the entire state of New York.
Doesn't matter.
Why is there only one?
Why does that matter?
Because they failed, it was a failure, they said you had to change that.
I mean, other towns have a smelter, you know, a little smelter. Many other towns have a, uh, a freshwater walk, and we don't own a smelter. I'm just saying, we can be different, we are a different town than everybody else.
Well, it's funny that the model would work here, but it doesn't work anywhere else. That's what strikes me as odd, this whole thing. The, um, and let me go one step further. There was an interest in pursuing special legislation on this, but still, no discussion of special legislation to help support people who are gonna get hung out to dry in the pension system if we do go to not-for-profit status. And I've, and I've been requesting now for three to four to five, I don't know how to how many years, a lot of years, that's all I know. And, and, so, but it is what it is. So, we got a motion on the floor.
I'm gonna make, I wanna table that then, because I wanna talk to the CEO and get clarification on if he actually did look into this. Could, I remember him saying something about the size, public corporations, about the size.
I'll retract my motion, we'll table it till next month.
Two hospital CEOs have told this board that privatization is the route to go. Two votes of the hospital board have said the same thing. Now, with the town board's vote at the last meeting, we gave them permission to pursue moving towards private, non-for-profit. If your motion passes, does that mean it stops?
No.
They're gonna do a both?
This is an alternate.
They're gonna do both?
Right now, there's a possibility of a petition.
Proceeding now.
Right now, there's a possibility of a petition being, uh, distributed, right? Right?
I don't know.
That's a rumor.
We should be talking about rumors.
We don't even know if it's gonna be finding, if there is one, but, go ahead.
So, if that petition goes forward, and if the public votes and decides they don't wanna go to a private hospital, then we're gonna wait till that time, two months down the road, three months down the road, just to start this? Why wouldn't you start it now, so you're ready for the future?
Why wouldn't you start what now?
Legislation.
The process is already started. A process.
Let's, let me pose a question, and if, if there, and it may be character over the words. If there is a petition, it calls for a referendum, and somehow that can be legally called a referendum, which I don't believe it can be, but that's another argument for another day. Who's gonna pay for the referendum?
I would say the town one. I think that, uh.
We're gonna spend thousands of dollars for a special election.
Well, I believe the opposite case was, uh, was discussed previously. If, uh, if the town voted to keep the hospital public, or you're, there's gonna be a referendum to make it private. And the town would have to pay for that as well.
I don't, I never, I don't know.
I've heard that. Well, you're.
I don't know.
I've never heard that.
Uh, I never read that suggestion either. Okay, so, I guess, you withdraw the motion at this point?
We'll go back to the public referendum, let's just discuss that as well. There was an article in the paper a few weeks ago, that basically said that the town board has decided that they wouldn't allow a public referendum.
No, I, I think we talked about that, Sam.
We have, I want that, it has been clarified.
Okay. Um, Bob, I didn't, I'm curious, or recall me to talk about, uh, this. What I, I believe what I was rea- I don't remember the exact quote. What I was reacting to was, um, not that the board had decided that a referendum was gonna happen, it was that they, that, I, and I, I don't remember, I don't wanna, it sounds like I'm dancing, but I can't remember what the quote was. The quote wasn't inaccurate, but it was not about the board saying that we're not in favor of a referendum. We've never, most, we haven't.
I know we haven't. That's the way the article read, I tried to find it, but it's not, I can't, uh, I went to the link, I couldn't get it, get it up.
I think it has to do with, you were talking about legal counsel, and it came out looking like this counsel.
Yeah, I think, right, I think that was.
That's what.
Counselors agree that, uh.
Right, but it was legal counsel versus town counsel.
Counsel being legal counsel.
Right.
It came across as town counsel.
Right, that's what.
We have, I forward to the board, what, four, three, four, five opinions?
Two.
Was there two?
I got two. One has to do with smoke in, uh, the city of Troy, five miles outside of the city of Troy, I don't know what has to do. How that, ha- pertains to a hospital being sold?
Because, Sam, the point was, the town board just can't arbitrarily give up its authority to a referendum.
Exactly, I understand that.
And, and already can a referendum somehow usurp our authority?
We were letting.
A petition for a referendum. So, so, we have basically two opinions sent to us by our attorney, saying that he doesn't believe the petition is legal.
Unless it's a sale.
Unless it's a transfer of property.
Okay. So what does a transfer agreement do?
Transfer would, would somehow transfer the property to a non-for-profit corporation, should one be formed.
Okay, so you just said a sale's a transfer, and a transfer agreement transfers the property.
Right.
So isn't that all the same?
We don't have a transfer agreement or a sale right now.
There will be a transfer agreement, a transfer to the hospital.
At some point, perhaps, yeah.
So a transfer is a sale. Legal definition of a sale is a transfer of property for.
All of which you will, I guess, the transfer's a transfer, yeah. I'll call it a sale, I don't care.
Okay. So that's a sale of the hospital, so there could be a public referendum.
There may be at, at some point, yeah.
So just for clarification, that this is the first discussion the board has had about a possible public, public referendum?
For clarification, you're absolutely right, because it's never come up here before, so why would we have that in conversation?
I just, that's the way the article read.
Okay.
I'll table my motion.
Table, you just gotta rescind it.
Withdraw, you can just withdraw it for now. The formal table process, we're gonna go through that, but. The formal tabling process, we're gonna go through that, but.
Right.
It's easier to withdraw, to be honest. Okay. Have any reports?
Would Paul Roberts rules the order up?
We always have, this board always has.
Are we, are we gonna set up a meeting with him or as a board or not?
Do you want to set a meeting, only come here and do a presentation here or do you want to do that? But if it's a meeting, we have to be a public meeting for, for, I'm not opposed to that, just.
I'll, I'll meet, I'll meet.
Or, I mean, I'd like to know too, so I, you know, I have no, no problem. I mean, I'll, I'll meet a special meeting. All right, let's, let's talk to him, see what his preference is. Do you want to do it one-on-one, I think that's, I can get a little nervous to do it separately.
Okay. So, I just need a meeting.
Well, all the players should be here actually.
Right, and everybody hears a different thing. All the players, what, what players?
The assemblywoman that would write the legislation, should know it's, I would, should be written or whatever, if there is any diversity with that.
So the assemblywoman, the town board, and Mr. Olden, and probably somebody to bounce in the board.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, uh, recreation.